Okay, may I have a motion to reconvene, please? Mr. Woodruff is seconded by Ms. Hunter. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, thank you. You are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you were referring to in your question.
Helen Slott, our 43 Thunderhead Place. I was just gonna say 16K. I believe this is the gentleman who was at the last meeting with Model Airplanes. And as a parent, I would like to thank Mr. Wong for donating and volunteering his time to robotics.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Shaw? Yes. Good evening, everyone. My report this evening is pretty simple because I'm gonna want to turn over my time to a time that is well worthy of time, and that is to our Assistant Superintendent. But before I do that, I want to let you know, I reported a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago, about CUSAC, the Quality Single Accountability Continuum. It's that monitoring term that the State Department uses for us. And I had reported that we had scored 100% in each of the five areas that the New Jersey Department of Education looks at when they look at a district. And those areas are fiscal management, instruction and program, governance, personnel, and operations. As a result of scoring 100% in all of those areas, the county and the Department of Education, in recognition of this determination, has invited us to apply for an exemption. And what that exemption means is, hey, listen, you're a high-performing district, you're doing a good job, your board passes a resolution, we will consider allowing you to do that good job for another three years and not spending a couple of days in your district looking through everything with a fine-tooth comb. So there is a resolution on the agenda this evening that allows for us to apply for this waiver. Not all districts in New Jersey get the opportunity to do this, and I really believe, as a result of the efforts of our staff and our administration, our teachers, and our students and how well they do, to be invited to do this is a real good thing. So we should be super glad. So I wanted to let you all know that. At this point, we have been, or rather, let me say, Dennis Fair and Dennis Miguel have been spending a great deal of time preparing for the recognition of our staff members in our district, and we're happy to see you all here supporting the staff members in your respective schools. I'm gonna ask Dennis just to briefly go through how we got to this point before we do shut down one of those lights and go into our video show. So it's all you.
Do you want to start with the newsletter? What does it come to look like right now?
Would you like me to?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'm first gonna talk about the newsletter.
That's a nice segue.
It's a great segue. One of the things that we wanted to do with our T-Bird Talk newsletter this year is take it out of that paper format, and we wanted to make it electronic. Electronic in the sense of you can look at it through a link, you can go through it, you can open up attachments, open up pictures, and embed videos. So you will be able to see a whole bunch about our district, and about our schools, about our STEAM edition, but it'll all be done electronically. Many districts have moved to an electronic format. It's friendlier, and it's easier to look through. So in doing that and starting to talk about it, Dennis had said to me, hey, listen, we wanna begin to spotlight and recognize our faculty. Wouldn't it be awesome if we can show the public who can't attend tonight, the staff that we wanna highlight and spotlight, and all they have to do is click the link and be able to see the great people that make our districts great? So it kinda stemmed into that, so is that good?
Absolutely, no. That's a great start.
It's all you, now.
Our Culture and Climate Committee, that's been meeting a few times this year thus far, we really talked about, initiated our conversations about how do we let our staff members know that they're appreciated? Right, Lauren and Elise, you're out there, Mike and John, who are also part of the committee, and Christine. And we first thought that we'd have a blurb to highlight our staff members in the T-Bird Talk, and then when we thought that the T-Bird Talk would then transform into something digital, we thought we would tap into the expertise of Mr. Miguel, who does a wonderful job with the Friday announcements over at the high school. So we knew this would be a little more dynamic, and our goal here was to showcase the great things that these six highlighted staff members do, but also, we wanted this to be an opportunity for the community to get to know these staff members beyond just a classroom perspective.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
The great part about all of this is, is that the staff members that are being highlighted tonight are being highlighted tonight because their colleagues nominated them.
Absolutely.
It wasn't putting names in a hat. It was sending out, Dennis sent out an email, and he said, hey, listen, if there's a colleague out there that you wanna recognize, any colleague in the district that you wanna recognize for something special that's made a difference, let us know. So a whole bunch of names came in on the nomination forms, and then the Climate and Culture Committee met again, and they chose one person to represent each of the schools. So what I really like is that it came from your peers. It came from your colleagues. And that's really cool.
And the process was, it was a lengthy one in terms of putting together these videos and producing the videos, because we wanted to make sure that we got a whole perspective on the staff member. So what you're going to see tonight is footage of the staff members doing what they do every day, informal interviews with the actual staff members, as well as their colleagues, and the administrators in their building. So you'll be able to get a fuller picture of the staff member, and we're excited that this is going to not be just a school community, but all of Mawa will have the opportunity to see all of these staff members showcased.
And we're starting off with Debbie?
Oh, we're going to start off with Betsy Ross.
We're gonna start off with Debbie?
Yes. All right. Debbie McGuire, can you stand?
Can you stand with?
All right, so those of you who do not know Debbie, Debbie's our school nurse over at Betsy Ross. If you know Debbie, she is wonderful. She's already getting teary-eyed, but we love you, all right?
And you're gonna love this.
Yes.
Do you have the lights?
Oh.
I don't know, what do you think? Is that okay? Yeah?
And I'm gonna say something. I don't feel like I work here. I honestly, I don't. I never wake up thinking I have to go to work.
She's given me history on families, on kids, on how it was done at Betsy Ross and the Betsy Ross way. We talk about a Mawa way, there's definitely a Betsy Ross way. And Debbie has been instrumental in helping me.
We constantly, in a nurse's office in school, triage, constantly. You know, sometimes my office will be full, and you have to use those skills, and their skills also. You know, I know which ones to go first, and you know, how to do that. Secondly, is honestly, because of my profession, a lot of stuff is inborn, like I just know. I don't know how to explain it, but if something's wrong, I pick up very quickly, because I know something's wrong.
She was a Deliverer's, a baby in Deliverer's, which is really quite cute, because there are families that'll come in and they have parents. They are the parents that were delivered by Debbie. So she has a very strong connection to community, which is really cute for the kids, too, because the parents come in, they'll hug her, and they'll love her, and then you'll see grandparents coming in just to talk to Debbie, because they were the ones, you know, Debbie was there from the beginning.
As you know, nursing is a calling. It's a profession, much like teaching, and I love it when teachers say to me, I don't know how you do this. And I look at them, and they go, I don't know how you do what you do, but we all have our gifts.
Splinters freak me out. They can't be in my neighborhood. I just don't want it there. So I went to her, and I'm like, can you help me? And she said, sure. And she puts, she said, if I put Neosporin on it, and put beardache on it, it'll come out eventually. So she put the Neosporin on it, and went and got something, and came over, and was like, oh, it's soft now, I can get it. And I was like, that's Debbie, you know? Just like, keep you calm, make you think nothing really major's gonna happen. And then, the next thing you know, there's a needle in the splinter, and she's picking it out, and I've been going to her ever since.
No, I guess I love, like, helping people, anybody, you know? I don't know that you're aware that I had to, I've had a couple of times here where I had to use my CPR skills, my AED skills here, which I, you know, everybody said, oh, good job, good job, but it's not what it feels like. It feels like I did what I had to do. I did what, you know, I'm trained to do. When I walked into the room with the person on the floor, they said, she's having a seizure, but it was my knowledge that knew she was having cardiac, she was in cardiac arrest. And it was just, like I said, inborn. Like, I knew it. I knew exactly what was going on, and I jumped in action. I fell apart after, but I know when I'm doing.
It might be their tooth is wiggly, or they just don't feel well. And Debbie fixes all of that. She fixes it for the adults, and she fixes it for the kids. And it makes the environment here feel very safe. So, and the parents know that, too. So the community, when they look and they know their kids are here and they're with Debbie, they know that they're safe.
She's the brightest ray of sunshine you ever wanna meet. The kids love her, because when they go into her office, it's like getting a hug.
I have worked with Debbie McGuire for the past 17 years at Betsy Ross. She's such a special person for all the children at Betsy Ross, and all the staff as well. She's there for everyone. She can fix any problem. We joke that she's a nurse, a vet, a therapist, all in one.
And I came to school nursing not knowing what I was getting into, thinking I'm not gonna use my skills, my nursing skills, but that is so far from the truth. It's different skills, and I absolutely love it. I really do.
So she helps all of us, you know? It's not, it's, the kids, of course, that's what's most important, but she helps all.
And she's just wonderful, such a kind, caring person, and everyone loves Mrs. McGuire.
So she's really in tune, not only with her craft and her knowledge and what she does in the medical field, but that connection, like I said, toward a community. It creates an atmosphere which you can't, you can't, you can't find in many schools.
I never wake up thinking I have to go to work. I wake up thinking I can't agree my best to do this. It has, it's true.
Dr. Shaw, are those peppermints? What's interesting is that there was a common thread amongst all of the people that we spoke to, and we literally just, we plucked teachers out of their classes, and we said, could you just say some great things about Debbie? And I hear myself echoing.
You are, yeah.
Sorry. But all of this was very organic. So Debbie, do you wanna say anything?
Thank you. Well, as you see, I love what I do. I have, I feel so fortunate, I really do, to be part of this school community. And it's true, I never wake up saying I don't wanna come to work, ever. Thank you, everybody.
Fabian is one of our awesome tech people, and Fabian was nominated by his colleagues. And he is also an awesome dad, and he is a cub master for his son. And they had a very important meeting tonight, and he couldn't miss it, and he tried to get someone to cover. So we brought all the central office administrators here today, our tech department, Carlos, and we all watched his video with him today, so that he could see it with a group of people and be acknowledged by people who care. But he is so very important to our district, and he proudly serves JK and Lenape. I know their principals are here this evening to recognize him, but we'd like to play his video. So even though he's not here, we'd like to show you Fabian. In another way.
I started working in Mawa in 1999. Like I was basically mentioned to you, my previous job decided to go, okay, and it was something that I was trying to avoid. While I was living in Brooklyn and commuting to New Jersey, the company relocated, and I decided to stay put. And it was a blessing this time, because I opened the newspaper about the same time, and I found the position for Mawa. I decided to just go for it, not knowing that it was gonna be pretty much a place that I was gonna be there for a long time.
There's a patience within Fabian, that he will spend the time to fix things that you need. He will work with you, he will wait for your decisions, but he does it with such a passionate attitude.
She's here, she's a professional. But I wanna do, basically, I'm gonna turn a new image of this computer, so I'm uploading it, grab an image, and then when it's ready, update it, I'll just go at it.
Not being able to do something with technology, and he can kinda clear that, clear the air for you and say, you know, just give me a second, and he'll even take over your computer for you, and kinda navigate through it and say, do you see this? Can you see that? Yes, I can. So he absolutely is always on point with his job. I think he loves what he does.
For me, I'm very much into technology, and so I like to know that I can troubleshoot on my own to a certain extent, and he's very forthcoming about filling in the gaps for you.
The bulk of work that we do is the tax support. So we are, we, each school do it, we have tickets from all schools, but primary tickets from the NAPQ, it's redirected to my queue, my, my, my NAPQ, and I go through them every single day, and I make sure that all the resources in terms of permission boards are up and running, all computers are with the latest drivers, there's a lot of these printers, they, all states are good with printers. But that's not pretty much what we do, you know, throughout the day. We have a lot of applications that we've been working on the backend, email issues, you know, problems, we work on that, wireless, we need to make sure the wireless is set up, access control with the doors, the phones, primal here, there's in other schools where we actually do it signage as well.
When they have an issue in their classroom, they know he's someone we can reach out to. He'll be there, whether it be five minutes or an hour, and I just think he gives a smile to their face when they see him walk in.
And I think he's able to answer those questions, whether he can answer it at that particular moment, or he can give back to you with a response.
The best part about Fabian is he comes, and he's very professional, but he's also, he's also such a good friend to everybody. So the first thing he does when he comes into your room or to talk to you isn't what the problem is, it's how are you? And, or he will say, you know, how's Dennis, my older son? Like, he knows my children's names, you know, and he knows that about everybody.
The running just came not long ago. I started running pretty much three years ago. Unfortunately, I lost to my brother-in-law at that point, and I kinda felt depressed, because they passed away very young. And at some point, at that particular frame time, I started feeling that I was pretty much getting depressed in terms of I'm not doing much exercise, I'm not eating the weight that I should. And again, let's mistake one of my friends from Suffolk with my daughter invited me to run. So I started with, you know, with short races, up to the point where we reached out the half marathon, and that was a year and a half ago. And I think that's when I made, one of the races, Mr. Miguel, and I was surprised. But my goal didn't stop there. My goal was like, what about, you know, a marathon? And I think that was something that I had talked to Jan at some point, it's like, I would like to actually do that, and she encouraged me. And that was something that I kept in mind. And fortunately enough, this year, I was able to run the Neoty Marathon, and that was one of the things that, you know, put me on a different perspective.
I was working at George Washington, and Fabian would come over and help us every time we needed him. And he went over and above, you know? He would just come over, and it could be something as silly as I didn't have it turned on, or it was plugged in.
When you call Fabian, it's always prompt, it's always, I have to do it, and I can do that for you.
He's got great personal skills.
He's always there for you. No matter what you need, come here, so when you see him walking in the building, it's actually a feeling of happiness.
We have a team, we have a lot of resources to do the district, so I'm very happy from the work that we have now, always here.
Fabian really is amazing, and we gave him the small gift and the big hook earlier this morning, so. All right, congratulations to him. There's an accent.
Kevin Olmer.
Kevin Olmer? Mr. Olmer, can you stand up so everybody can see you? Do I wanna say anything about Kevin Olmer? Kevin is, what did you say? There you go. Kevin is as outstanding a person as he is a principal. And at the heart of everything he does is always kids, and you can't say more about it, administrator, he makes decisions that way. So that is my intro to you, Mr. Olmer, and here's your video, hold on tight.
We also know that you left your holiday party to be here, Kevin, so thank you.
And he's a Mawa graduate, too. Mr. De Silva added that, and that's an important note, that's right.
It's my seventh year here at GW. My favorite memory, I would say any of our spirit days that we have here are really memorable. Each month, we have a Spirit Day where students and staff kinda symbolically show our unity as one giant team by all wearing GW t-shirts, t-shirts that are designed by students, which is really, really cool. But on those days, we have special team-building activities for our students, but also for the staff. There's all types of interesting and fun activities that we do, and it's great to just see how our staff have a really fun time, connect with one another, seeing the students support each other, bring each other on in different situations. So I think any given Spirit Day that you were here to visit GW, you see a lot of smiles on people's faces, and that really is something that's personally really gratifying to me, because I want people, you know, as adults and professionals to be happy coming to work, and I want our students to be really excited about learning, being in school every day.
So Kevin and I grew up together. He was two years older than I was, so he was in the same grade as my brother. He was overall that great student that was always involved. He was gifted and talented. He played soccer, he played baseball very well. He won a poetry contest, said Joyce Kilmer, the poem was actually about baseball. I remember he was just one of those overall just great students, great friend, someone you'd always just wanna be around.
In terms of the trio, it's been about support. He's been very supportive. If I reach out to him, he helps me with answers. He has given me advice on how to handle certain things. I think within meetings, for me, it's watching his intelligence. There's just a wittiness to him, but a very seriousness on another note.
Yeah, Kevin has this way about him, where he'll say something, and you think about it, wow, I was really intelligent and really funny at the same time. So he is, he's been for me, somebody that I can call to, and he's that calm force. So I call him, and he's just, he's even keeled at all times. And, you know, he's just somebody that can speak from experience, but also has the heart in leading, and that's really, really important when you're working with kids that are so young. So he's a good principal to look up to.
Kevin is a principal, he's a friend, he's also a very big family man. He's got a wonderful family. He's got his wife Christina, which was his high school sweetheart, and one of my best friends, his two beautiful children, Alexis and Ryan, and he really just understands what it's like to have family.
I can't believe the community that I stepped into, and I think a large part of the community is Kevin's leadership, and Kevin putting together a team that wants to work every day, is excited to be here, wants to do the best for their students and for their colleagues.
He's such a perfectionist. He just makes you wanna work harder, and there's nothing like working for somebody like that, who just strives to have his staff be the best that they can be. When Kevin comes into the classroom, no matter what, it's never just to look around. He's always joining in on the activities, on the rug, playing games with the kids, he's joining in our morning meeting, he's always participating. So the kids are always so familiar with who he is, and are just so comfortable around him.
I was just introducing an opinion-writing writer's room piece, and I said, oh, how would we make this school letter? And I said, you could write to teachers, you could write to special teachers, you could write to friends, and they were like, no, we need to write to Mr. Olmer, we need to write to Mr. Olmer, he's the best. And they were just convinced that they needed to write their letters for Mr. Olmer. So he's just very helpful.
So I wanna ask the kindergartners this morning what they thought of Mr. Olmer and why he is the star. I did tell them that he was nominated to be kind of like our star of the week, and they had some really great answers. One child said, Mr. Olmer is a star because he has the greatest school, which is so great. Another thing, another student says, Mr. Olmer is great because he loves birthday sex. So that was something to hear. I also heard things like, Mr. Olmer has great teachers, Mr. Olmer loves to play with us, Mr. Olmer cares about all of us. So it was a really good hit. So, yeah. The little kindergartners, in the eyes of a five-year-old.
I think I pursued becoming a principal because I wanted to have a broader impact really on the students here. I really enjoyed working with all of my students in high school, really enjoyed the connection I was able to have with individual students, but there were some things and some challenges that I thought were out there in education that I wanted bigger-handed. I think it's cliche in some ways, but decisions I make here at school at GW for students here, I always have my own kids in mind. I have a daughter Alexis, who's in fourth grade, nine years old, and my son Ryan's in kindergarten, he's five years old, and I think everyone that knows me knows how much I care about them. And certainly, when I kind of craft what I want our school to be, I always have my own kids in mind. And most importantly, for my own kids and for the kids here.
I trusted my judgment, and as a brave teacher, having somebody who is just so supportive of me. having somebody who is just so supportive of you is very exciting. But he knows, whatever he's doing, he knows that's for kids. So, and his teachers, you know, his teachers nominated him, so that speaks volumes to him.
So he's very understanding for all of us, moms who are in the building, or dads. And when something goes wrong, he's always there for you, no matter what.
His openness to ideas, his inclusion of listening to his teachers, it's a joy to listen to how she speaks about him.
I want our students here really to learn the impact that they can have on others just through their words and actions and reaching out and being a good person.
Kevin, now I'm coming back. We have a little gift for you, and I'm going to hug you. Dennis may hug you too, I don't know. Kevin, you want to say anything?
Sure. Can't pass up an opportunity to speak, right? I will say, while I'm so appreciative of this award and flattered to be recognized, any accomplishment at George Washington, whether it is a staff accomplishment, a student accomplishment, is an accomplishment of our team. And we're really working together each and every day to make sure that every student is successful, that every staff member is successful. So, like I said, while I'm certainly flattered, know that this accomplishment really represents the accomplishments of all of our staff and all of our students. And I'm only as good as the people working under my leadership. So I'm grateful to have such a wonderful staff, grateful to have such great colleagues, and certainly blessed to be a school leader in this community. So, thank you.
Kevin, I know that you left your holiday party, and your staff is probably wondering how you're doing. And I know you'd love to stay and hear others, but you have a staff that's probably waiting for you. And so...
I appreciate that.
You're welcome to go. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
The next featured staff member is Elise Dashes. She is our reading specialist over at Joyce Kilmer School.
This is my 30th year teaching at Joyce Kilmer School. So I was invited to teach here in 1987 by Judy Navy, who was a principal at the time. And I taught fourth grade at the time. So I've taught fourth grade, I've taught fifth grade here, 11 years in fourth grade, like 15 years in fifth grade. And I've been the reading specialist in the building for the last... this is my fifth year, I think.
I've been fortunate enough to know Elise for seven years now. When I got here, she was a fifth-grade language... our teachers now, she works as a reading support specialist. And she does so much for so many... she works with teachers and really supports the teachers along lines of developing them professionally. She's one of the major reasons why we've been so successful with Reading and Writing Workshop.
As the reading specialist at Joyce Kilmer School, one of the things I do is during the beginning of the year, I assess new students that come in, where they are at their reading level. I touch base with teachers so they can provide services and instruction for those kids. I set up a lot of the background work that needs to be done for the teachers, all the, some of the administrative stuff, so that they're able to hit the ground running.
She also works with the students who need the most. She does a really great job with working with students to need foundational skills to build their confidence and really make them feel as though they can work in the classroom and really thrive.
I work with Dr. Deturo. And Ms. Adams is to put together all the homerooms where they can record all that information so we can get a quick look at students who are at reading level, below reading level, how far below reading level they are, who is above reading level. And we look at that data when we're placing students for flex and instruction.
Well, when I first met Elise, she told me that she'd been here for close to 30 years. And I think that that's just a true testament to what an amazing educator she is. And I think that being able to be in a place and build relationships with people and have such a presence for that amount of time just is a true testament to her character.
So the history is that Elise and I, when I first started my teaching career back in the 90s, I student-taught in Elise's classroom. And so she was my first experience in a classroom. And I can't tell you what type of experience that was. She was amazing in the classroom. And then when I came back to the school district to teach again, the first question I asked when I walked in for my interview was, is Elise still here? And I remember the end of my interview coming, and she found me. And it was just so amazing, you know? She's just such a thoughtful person.
And I love every time she comes in the office, and she's passionate about something new. And she always wants to bring something new, innovative and fresh into her classroom or into our school.
What's not great about Elise? I've known Elise for 16 years since I've been working here. And Elise, from day one, has been a go-to for me. She's somebody, and in a go-to in a way where I feel completely 100% comfortable going to her. You don't feel comfortable with everybody, especially your first year. Elise is one of those people that, right away, I knew I could ask her anything when she... You work all these years. I see, I was working... Oh, jeez. So there's lots of people that inspire me. I don't know if I could do it. Remember Jane Donlin? So there was one year I met a teacher who had been in the district for a long time. And I knew of her but didn't know her. And she taught pre-kindergarten down at Lenape. And she came to me in the first day of school one year, introduced herself to me, and she said, Elise! I said, hi! She's like, I'm Jane Donlin, I'm going to be working with you. I'm like, oh, I'm so excited! And I knew of her and I didn't know her. So she, and God bless her little heart, because she would go from pre-K and come to teach fifth grade. And she'd never taught fifth grade before. So she brought so much knowledge and so much inspiration and so much passion that she changed my whole outlook of teaching. She really did. And she's somebody I will always forget her picture, which I know there. But she's someone who really made a difference in me as a teacher. And I will always be appreciative of that. And it was just for a short period of time in my life, but it was the best.
And she just has a great way of building a sense of community in her classroom and among the teaching staff.
Elise can do that, she can bring out the best in anyone.
She builds great relationships with kids. She's always smiling, and she's always willing to help out.
She's a wonderful person, a wonderful teacher, a wonderful mentor. I opted to go to reading and language arts because it's something that I really enjoy and I love.
All right, Elise, you know what's coming, stand up. That was awesome, just awesome. We're so proud of her. Where's Dennis? Dennis?
That's all right, Dennis, I'm going to email him.
I'm not nominating you next time.
No, we have a bond.
Elise, would you like to say anything?
I would love to, if I could not cry. I guess passion is the thing. But I have had the honor and the privilege of working in this district for 30 years. Told you! And I've had so many children. And, you know, one of the things that I've always said is that, you know, we, teachers, always touch the lives of the kids that we work with. But I think the biggest thing that I have learned in the last 30 years is that the kids touch my life. And the parents, who are part of the community, are so... they work so hard, they do so much, and I'm so grateful for everything they do. And the support that I've had as a teacher in Mawa, and I've been to so many other districts and seen so many other things, it's unparalleled. And I am so grateful to be here.
Our staff highlight from Rampuris Middle School is Kathy Carisi. Kathy, just stand up, wave.
Hi, Kathy.
Kathy is our school psychologist, and we'll learn a little bit about her and her advocacy.
I started volunteering when I was 17 years old at a place for children with disabilities. And it made sense for me. And I wanted to figure out how to merge psychology and special education together. And I became a school psychologist as a result. I guess I wear a lot of different hats. I evaluate children to determine what their potential for learning is. I develop individualized education plans to assist them with learning. I do crisis counseling, I do weekly counseling. I sit on I N R S. I am a resource to teachers and all students here in the building.
Topics that, when it comes to emotional well-being, emotional health for students, and she can usually provide a number of strategies for us to help that child and those families navigate through some difficult times.
I've known Kathy Carisi for 17 years. We actually started in Mawa right around the same time. She started a few months before I did. She was a special psychologist, I was a teacher here in district. I found Kathy to be one of the most important individuals I could align myself with when I became assistant principal. She certainly gave me a new understanding and appreciation for our special education population. And I think she is probably the one person who has taught me the most as I've been on my education journey.
Her demeanor is one of the things that sets people at ease. But she's able to work with teachers, work with students, work with parents, to get the most out of a student, align the education for that student so they can really perform at their highest level.
I feel like my role here in the district or in this study in particular is that if any student is struggling, that I should be able to come up with ideas to make learning easier for them, to help teachers differentiate instruction, come up with ideas for, you know, with regard to accommodations.
Outside of Mawa, Kathy has four or five other full-time jobs. And one of them is dedicating her life to adults and children with profound disabilities in which she creates social, emotional, and recreational opportunities so that they can have a complete and whole life.
I run a nonprofit organization called Camp Acorn. It's a program for individuals with disabilities that consumes pretty much my outside life. We have four programs within Camp Acorn that involve social enrichment. And it allows individuals with disabilities, moderate to significant disabilities, to have everyday opportunities that you and I have. And it's something that I've done for most of my life, and I don't really know a life without it.
Kathy has always been a school psychologist for the district. And I would say that the characteristic that resonates the most with me about her is her dedication and advocacy for children. I would say that she goes above and beyond for all of the children that are on her caseload and any students that are in need. So she's a therapeutic support and emotional support. And as a colleague, I would say the best thing she brings to the table is her sense of humor.
What do you do for fun?
I play jokes. Elise, are the recipients of those jokes?
Our past principal was the recipient of a lot of the pranks. He really loved them, just saying.
He's definitely one of those people that puts her whole heart into laughing and enjoying herself. Because obviously, her work is stressful enough that having that outlet is really healthy and necessary.
She has a very self-deprecating sense of humor about herself, and that immediately puts any student at ease and helps them to focus on the conversation that we're having at the moment and get past any fear or nervousness that they may have.
My grandparents were my initial inspiration. I watched them as a young girl help my immediate family, my mother in particular. Our neighbors, they always found ways to help people out in need, even when they didn't always have the ability. And then when I was 17 and I started volunteering, I met somebody who really became my mentor with understanding what my career options would be in psychology and understanding disabilities and how it doesn't limit people and to see much beyond the disability. And he was a tremendous... he had a tremendous impact on my education and I guess what I do today. Maybe he's a current psychologist. Oh, his name is Dr. Gravatola. He's in California right now.
She adds a level of loaded to the office sometimes, especially during intense situations.
She's been a case manager that's made sure that students receive services so that they can leave Mawa knowing how to read, knowing how to be a productive member of society.
She's really one of the people that we need to go to, myself, administration, guidance counselors, use Kathy as a resource.
I don't know, it's a back-and-forth relationship because I'm always learning from my colleagues. And I'd like to think they will learn from me.
Well, you know I'm coming.
Kathy, I'm going in for the hug.
Kathy, would you like to say anything?
Obviously, from the presentation, I'm not very good at speaking.
You're a pleasure.
That I have worked in Mawa for 17 years. I have worked with children with special needs for more than half my life. It's something that is extremely important to me, and I feel very grateful that I can do that every day here in Mawa. Impacting children means a lot to me, especially helping them develop who they are and to be successful in both. So thank you for this, I appreciate it.
Last speaker, Kristen Free, who is a science teacher at Mawa High School.
Here with family.
Here with family, you're two wonderful children. You'll also meet in this video.
I've been in Mawa since 2003, so it's been almost 15 years. During that time, I've taught ninth grade biology. Mostly now, I am with 12th graders teaching electives, anatomy and physiology, microbiology. I was teaching a sports medicine class, or a sports physiology class.
Because she has a real solid foundation in science content, and more specifically, science process, she's really able to help new staff members with their lessons. She's able to help new staff members implementing the scientific process with kids.
She also knows how to convey that to other teachers in terms of what it looks like in a classroom, what it should look like, what a good teacher should look like to all the kids, but also to her colleagues.
I genuinely enjoy talking about instruction and learning about instruction and exploring new ways to instruct the same old thing. So with all the new teachers that I've worked with, I've really tried to focus on that with them. And it's... and it's really rewarding when they make the jump from presenting, the presenting aspect of teaching, to actually getting inside a child's head and figuring out what they need to do to be successful.
After my very first day, actually, you know, in district, and they announced us, and she came running up to me, and she said, "Your last name's Pisa." And I said, "Yeah," and I thought I was in trouble, but it turns out she actually had taught my brother. So we immediately kind of had that. Emerson can actually, she used to work there and grew up there, and she just heard telling me stories about her first few years teaching, and all the things that she learned kind of from that. Not specifically, you know, from, but, you know, it was just like nice to have that, you know, be able to have that conversation with her.
Kristen Fried is a leader in this building, and she has been for a long time. She's very knowledgeable. She's patient with the students. Students absolutely love her because she has so much passion for what she does, and she's always there for the kids. And our colleagues appreciate her because she's always making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. She really goes out of her way to try to make her department better, and she's a definite asset to the school.
I associate myself with Ms. Fried because I think she was really funny.
I'll take the beat out of my...
Maybe it's sponsors on your way.
I was really excited by her passion for science, and more importantly, by her ability to easily have rapport with people. You can tell she was passionate, you can tell she was friendly, you can tell she was enthusiastic. And I actually had to call her a number of times to talk to her and to convince her to leave Emerson because she liked Emerson, and she was a tenured staff member there.
I went and observed her, one of her classes where she was using OneNote to really engage the kids, and I think that she's very brave about her use of technology even when something rolls out and it's brand-new. She tries it with the kids anyway, and they were really engaged in the lesson.
I find it exciting to jump in and try new things. I find for myself, when I'm doing the same thing all the time, I kind of get in a rut. And I find it more intellectually stimulating and fun to dive in and learn new ways of doing things. It's exciting for the kids, I think, when teachers try new things. And for myself, it helps me to do the same things better and in a different way.
She's always on top of her game. She's a great teacher. And I think that the relationships she makes with students are particularly deep. And she connects with them in a really, really personal way. I know kids come back to her all the time. And at first meetings, she also has a surprising depth of knowledge of her students. So she brings a lot to the table, and I think people recognize that.
I love to ski. I've played tennis my entire life. I haven't had much time for personal hobbies since having my two children. Most of my free time is spent devoted to them and their hobbies. But now that my kids are a little older, we love to ski together. We love to travel together. Spending time with them is my greatest joy outside of working with the students at Mawa High School.
She's well-versed in school procedures and guidelines for just about anything that happens in this building. So she acts as an awesome resource for staff members and students.
She's always the go-to in terms of training, in terms of support for younger teachers. She knows her stuff, period.
When I'm an advanced teacher one day in my later years, then I would just want to be just like her.
She's always willing to jump right in when there's new things to do around here, and she always kind of takes it with a grain of salt. It's great, I appreciate it.
She's the constant professional. She's willing to help anybody with anything.
She's very supportive, and she really inspires me to be a better teacher because of all the hard work that she does with the students.
Students may not leave my class and remember everything I taught them about anatomy and physiology, but I hope that when they leave my class, they have witnessed an example of kindness and compassion.
That was awesome, and so were you.
Thank you so much. I'm an emotional person anyways. Brutal. Where did you find those pictures? Oh my God, I'd like to thank the Academy. I love teaching in the Mawa School District, I really do. And I feel so lucky to have been here and have been supported by so many wonderful leaders, especially John Pascal, Linda Boden. There are times when the circus feels too much, and I definitely know that I couldn't juggle everything I could without amazing ring leaders. So I appreciate, I've always appreciated their support, especially as a teacher and as a working parent, because that can be challenging too. So thank you so much, I'm just so grateful. I really am so honored and touched. Thank you.
So a couple of little big thank yous, and that will conclude all of this. I want to first by thanking Dennis Fair for all he did to initiate this and to send out emails and to bring everybody together and to make it happen. But I do have to say that it all would not have come all together if not for the man in the back of the room. And if you would join me in thanking Dennis Miguel. Dennis has really quite a skill, there's no doubt about it. I know from what Dennis up here will tell me that you have spent countless hours in the evenings and on the weekends making sure that our staff, your colleagues, were projected in the best way possible. They were unique, they were made with care and the passion and dedication that this district is known for. We're proud to work with you, we're proud to work with all of you, and thank you for making our district so great and for all of you being here to support your colleagues. We're really, we're really very lucky. Thank you. You are all welcome to go home to your families if you would like, please. Thank you.
So Dennis Miguel, thank you again for your help. There's a lot of brain work involved, so.
Where was the picture of John Pascal, Kevin Omler? All my copies are in here.
Only on the opening day slide. And that didn't have the Dennis Miguel pizzazz, the opening day slide.
Actually, can I finish my report? I just showed some real color, so it doesn't involve much. Carlos, can you just hit that one light?
Aye.
If you scroll down our homepage, since we're talking about showcasing our teachers, if you scroll down our homepage, what we've been working on is on the left-hand side, you'll have a monthly store five. And what this does is it compiles and pulls from different teachers' Instagram and Twitter accounts, and different administrators' Twitter accounts and Instagrams. That goes on, that's on the left-hand side, so that's updated monthly. On the right-hand side is the Mawa Schools Twitter account. So if you don't have a Twitter account yourself, you can still check this out, it's updated in real time, everything that's going on in our district. So that is constantly being updated on the right-hand side. I actually tweeted during this meeting.
That's really good. I bet you're paying attention.
So I just want to make everyone aware of that, since that's going to be.
Dennis was all sorts of responsible for this, everyone, so pulling everything together and putting it up on the website so that we could get everything out of there has really turned out real well that he does sit in meetings and now he tweets.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
These videos are embedded in.
They're embedded in, yeah, in fact, it's a great question. They're going to be embedded into this digital newsletter that we're doing. And what we've typically done with the newsletter is that I send it out to the Community Relations Committee so that you guys can, it's not live yet on our website, but you'll be able to kind of go through it, make sure you're good to go. I'm thinking a couple of days, two or three days, and by Monday, I'd like to release it to our district staff first, you, and then the district staff, of course, and then our parents. Because I really think that it's going to be an amazing hit because all these things that you saw, people can access right from their, right from their cellphones, and access the video and say, "Wow, that's my kid's teacher." So we had a lot of people here tonight, which is awesome, but there are thousands of people that we didn't. So it'll be real cool to allow this to be able to get out to them. So that's kind of our plan, public on Monday.
And we plan on doing this in March as well as in June. So this isn't going to be a one-time shot. We want to make this a tradition in Mawa.
This is something, hopefully, we can have a link that we can actually send out to parents as opposed to have people come to the website.
No, actually, the letter that I'm talking about that describes, we put it together, Christine, actually, the three of us put it together, describes what we're up to, and has the link embedded right in my email. So you'll read it on the phone and go, "Okay, I can click right here." You don't have to do that. But people who don't get it or choose to delete my emails, and I'm sure that's possible, can go to the website.
Really?
Really? And just go to the website, and they'll be able to go down to the TBR website. It'll be cool. All right, moving on. I'm done, we're done.
Thank you very much, you finished? Okay, Mr. Luke, did you have anything for us this evening?
Yes, I do have a few things. First, our annual audit, our annual is completed. It was delivered to us earlier this week. All the board members have been presented a copy of it tonight. The finance committee is scheduled to meet with their auditor next week to discuss or review any questions they might have. And for our next board meeting on December 20th, there will be a resolution pertaining to the audit on it as well as a synopsis that's available for the public. So I wanted to just give everybody an update on that. The cellphone tower bid that we have been talking about the past couple of meetings, that is out, it's on the street. It's currently active, it was active as of last week on December 1st, Friday. It went out. We have an anticipated opening of proposals scheduled for mid-January, Wednesday, January 17th for that. So an update regarding that is something we've been working on for a few months now. And the last item to just bring everybody's attention, one modification to one of the resolutions. On page nine, Resolution 15U. The change of a little bit of language here. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Superintendents Schools, the Mawa Boardification approves the usage of the New Jersey Cooperative Bid Maintenance Program. Wanted to correct that one modification, make that one a modification to it for when the board acts on it later this evening. And that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. That's my report this evening. Mawa High School senior, we have a title as Mawa High School senior, left it all on the field and became the winner in Wendy's High School Heisman. Mr. John Pascal, Principal of the Mawa High School, announced that Kyle O'Malley has won the Wendy's High School Heisman. There are some students who set the bar. They work harder, show more passion, and lead by example in the classroom, on the field, and within the community. Today, Wendy's High School Heisman recognizes Kyle O'Malley from Mawa High School and his dedication to never cutting corners by naming him a school winner. So this student is known by his teachers and friends for his commitment to excellence, and we are excited and honored that a program like Wendy's High School Heisman is also recognizing his hard works at John Pascal, Principal of Mawa High School. Since 1994, Wendy's and the Heisman Trophy Trust have been running the same play to perfection, honoring more than 600,000 of the nation's most esteemed students. This year, Wendy's will celebrate the accomplishments of thousands of the best high school seniors awarding winners in five phases. School winners will receive a school winner certificate and a Wendy's High School Heisman patch. Kyle is our school winner, so congratulations to Kyle on his accomplishment. 2018 Bergen County Band Acceptances. So congratulations to the following 10 Mawa High School band students for their acceptance by competitive audition into the 2018 Bergen County Band. Kristen Springer with flute. Maxwell Mejia on the oboe, he's first chair. Jonathan Zhang, clarinet. Joshua Segaria, trumpet. Matthew Slotbauer, trumpet. Justina Kender, trombone, she's first chair. Gabriella Vici Domini, trombone. Gianni Spinella, tuba, he's first chair. Mark Sitartuba and Sam Darrow, percussions. Congratulations to all those students. And let's see, John Pascal, Principal of Mawa High School, announced that Joseph Bukey has won, has been chosen. I think it's Bucci or Bukey, I don't know.
Bukey.
Bukey, thank you very much, excuse me, Joseph, I'm sorry, Bukey. Has been chosen as one of the recipients of the 2017 New Jersey Governor's Award in all, in New Jersey All-State Chorus. Every year, over 1,000 New Jersey students audition for All-State Chorus. Of the 350 who are selected for the mixed chorus, only 16 students qualify to apply for the Governor's Award. Mawa High School junior, Joseph Bukey, who won the top 10 or 1 in last year's chorus auditions, has been selected as one of this year's four Governors Award winners. This is the first time a Mawa vocalist has been selected for this high school's high honor in music performance. So congratulations to Joseph Bukey on his wonderful achievement. And this past weekend, I just want to say that I saw a wonderful production of Once in a Lifetime, so I say kudos to the cast and crew. They gave awesome performances and did a great job. And that is my report for this evening. Do you have any other board, community reports? Yes, Mr. Gallo.
I'm going to report on finance and facilities for a moment. So the STEAM project is moving forward through design phase. My next step is to make a presentation to the Mawa Planning Board shortly. The committee has also been working on a multi-year capital plan. We're going to resume our work on that in January. As Kyle already referenced, on the 15th, we're meeting with the auditor to go over the audit report. And in January, we begin our budget season. And for negotiations committee, we will soon begin a discussion with our supervisors and administrators on their contract.
Do you have a date for the board planning meeting? Do you know what the due date is?
No, we don't.
Anyone else?
Got a quick one for the Schools Foundation. The Schools Foundation just had their 50/50. They pulled the winning ticket on Saturday, so they sold 782 tickets for a total of $15,640.
I guess I didn't win.
He didn't beat their player press.
So Cindy Van Alstine won $7,820 bucks. Policy's pretty solid. So congratulations to the foundation and to Danielle Gallinelli and Tracy Labar, who were the co-chairs for the event. So great job by them and by the association.
Anyone else? Instructional?
Yes.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Christine.
I'm still wiping away the tears. The instructional and special ed committee met last Friday, December 1st. On the agenda tonight, you'll see Mercedes Blanco's name for teaching something new for us, ESL Parent Workshops. It's part of the Parent Academy construct, paid for through the Title III grant. It's going to be Parents one week, Parents and Children the following week, and start in January and run through June. So we're very excited about that. That came about through conversations with the ESL Parent Advisory Council, something that parents are looking for and will fully help them to integrate more fully into our community. So we're excited about that. And I thank both Mimi Lazansky and Mercedes for starting this new program. Secondly, two, actually, second and third, we have some things that are not on the agenda tonight but we're excited about. After about 10 years of not having the Orton-Gillingham FDU cohort, we're resurrecting that. About 10 years ago, we had two cohorts of teachers go through the FDU Orton-Gillingham program. It's quite rigorous, takes its 12 credits, and includes a clinical component that includes our students who have reading difficulties. Orton-Gillingham is a multisensory reading program that addresses students with dyslexia and other reading difficulties. And the program helps teachers teach children from the youngest grades all the way up through adult. So excited about that, and excited that 40 teachers came out for the informational session. Over 20 teachers applied. We had an application committee who selected, and we have 12 teachers who are taking part. So they're thrilled, I met with one today for a post-observation conference, and they're thrilled to be part of it. We're thrilled to do that for them. And finally, this week internationally is the Hour of Code Week, where students all over the world learn about computer coding. We used to call it programming, now the word's coding. To keep our instructional program going, we're going to do it the week before we break for the holidays. All of our kids in Mawa will be participating in this. Grades pre-K through 5 will do it in library classes, and grades 6 through 12 will do it in math. Danielle Polway, a 612 math supervisor, and Sue DeVito, the technology supervisor, did a wonderful job in instructional, explaining it. Actually, Danielle said 612 has been doing it for a number of years. Very excited to take it district-wide, so that's my report for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh yes, policy met tonight. We got through, we finished the review and update of the 7,000 series for the policies. And on the December 20th meeting, we'll begin the review and update for the 7,000 series regulations.
Thank you very much.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, is our plan to place all of those policies for a board approval on December 20th? Was that what the committee decided?
Yes.
Yes? Yes? That's a yes. It's more not. Could you go?
Yes. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Do you have any board member remarks or additional comments on reports or other non-agenda items? non-agenda items? I'd love to also thank Mr. Wong, and Mr. Slotbauer, thank him too, because I think he's going to be a great addition, his enthusiasm that he brings to our district is great. Okay, Old Business, we have a resolution to move Old Business, Ms. Conoco, seconded by Mr. De Silva.
Yes, of course. Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmorski?
Stand.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Stand.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
And Ms. Barrett?
Yes. Now, I'd like to, a motion to move on New Business, 15A through X, and a motion to move, Mr. Wenderkowitz, seconded by Ms. Mavertish. Any discussions, comments?
I'm abstaining on check number 088885.
Thank you.
I'll be abstaining on 088703 and 088826.
Thank you. You ready for that?
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmorski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes, abstaining on 15U.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
And Ms. Barrett?
Yes. Now, I'd like to take New Business personnel, 16A through R, have a resolution to move on that, Mr. Wenderkowitz, seconded by Mr. De Silva. Any questions, comments?
I'd like to echo the sentiments about so long. After his participation in our last meeting, I'm happy to use the money.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmorski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
And Ms. Barrett?
Yes. Public questions or comments? Note, this section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Vriesen, 20 Falcon Court. Does the Board of Education have work, is thinking about coming up with a position on the possibility of a marijuana store in Mawa?
I think the president would love to answer that question.
It's coming.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have a position? Do you have a position?
We don't have a position on that, yeah. That would be, I mean, we personally probably all have positions on that, but as a board, we don't. Probably the town council would be where you would take that issue?
It came up at the last council meeting, and I think it stunned a lot of people because it's nice to think about the state, but when it's your town, and it's Route 17, and there's a store, and we have a college and a high school in our town, we should have some pretty limited thinking.
I want to take that with the governor, the new governor.
Yeah, and he's all, I mean, the record today, at an editorial saying, "Slow down." And for the record, to slow down on a progressive issue is a big deal.
Yes, yes.
But let me give you two numbers. In Las Vegas in 2010, there was a convention of 400 people who were involved in the marijuana business of planting, growing, from table to farm, basically, distribution. A month ago, they had the annual convention again, and they went from 400 seven years ago to 20,000. So you can see that there's money in this.
That's the driving force right now with the new governor.
That's what it is. And today's trivia question, how far are we, sitting here, how far are we away from a retail store that is, I believe, owned and operated by ultra-orthodox Hasidic Jewish people? How many miles do you think we are away?
I don't know.
Let's write town.
One mile.
Yeah.
Yeah, car the road.
Yeah, the appliance store.
Right, yeah. That's not, that's not a board issue.
I know, but it's interesting to know.
It's interesting, thank you very much.
Because it's part of the whole picture.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Havelin Slotbauer, 43th and Ty Place. I, this question is probably for Mrs. Zinnerman. The new science standards of the exam that's coming, okay, so for the graduating classes of 2019 and 2020 who took the biology competency exam, I guess what effect is this exam going to have on those kids?
I'll tell you that Dr. Shown got an email today from the New Jersey Association of School Administrators, putting to rest some misinformation that's out there. She forwarded that to me, and I haven't had a chance to read it closely, so.
Okay.
But I did send it to Mr. Pascal and Mr. Gliata, so they'd probably be the ones who could, who could answer that question.
Send them an email. And then the, I guess, the other thing, maybe not marijuana, but I know there's a big thing now with the, with the guns and they carry and conceal, and I know that there are people going, you know, I guess, the future of that for the state and what that would mean for the school?
It hasn't moved out of, it hasn't moved out of that house yet, so I wouldn't be concerned, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing that we would be able, again, it's not something that we'd be able to do anything about.
Okay, was just seeing if you had any, any insight to anything? No?
No. Trenton doesn't let us know anything. Right.
It's a has resolution, has resolution 38.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Kelton, Steve, Sabara. First of all, I want to commend you all for putting a program together to recognize the stars in each school. Outstanding presentation that was done. It couldn't have been better, it's something that we should be very proud of and the winners very proud of. But more importantly, and what drove home for me, the biggest thing with this, was that these winners were nominated by their peers, and that makes it all the more authentic. So to everybody that we saw today, it was very touching, very nice, and congratulations to everybody who put that together. I even thought about that, because recognition is very important for anybody in business and the school world, on the council and such. I was going to come and ask Mr. Bleeker for an update on the cellphone tower thing, but he read my mind, because we do have a meeting next week, and I wanted to tell the council as to where we are, and the public will be there, but thank you for that information. And lastly, a year and a half ago, I was appointed, they twisted my arm, to become the liaison to the, to the school board, and wasn't sure what I was getting myself into. However, over the last year and a half, I've learned a lot from everybody here, I learned a lot about how the school runs, what the school board's responsible for, what the superintendents and their staff are responsible for, something that I really didn't know, even though I graduated three children through the Mawa High School system. This coming January 4th, in our reorg meeting, we were going to be, we're going to be reorging all of the liaison positions throughout all the other boards, so this will be, unfortunately, my last meeting that I get to attend with you, because I will not be available on the 20th. I just wanted to thank you for your hospitality, and thank you for your professionalism, and thank you for trying to teach us how to run a very efficient, quick meeting, although this is probably one of the longest ones. But I just wanted to do my personal thanks to all of you for what you do, and thank you for what you do, because, you know, I know what it's like to be on the council and sitting up there, and your dedication as elected officials and employees of the staff for our children in this town goes a long way, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure the sentiments of the council would say the same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can still show up.
Okay, like, motion to adjourn? Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. Oh, Ms. Conoco, do that one. Motion to adjourn, thank you all.
Thank you.